It being six o'clock, I will call this meeting to order of the Enfield Board of Selectmen, May 16, 2022, in the Public Works Facility and via video conference. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of May 2, 2022.
I move we approve them as printed?
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Next up, we have board reports.
I have nothing to report for planning board as it was canceled last time.
I have nothing to report.
Leave it alone.
Okay, moving right along, we have the town managers' report.
All right, thank you. This kind of continued update, staff report. We are currently putting interviews together for the DPW Administrative Assistant Human Services Coordinator position with the passing of Diane. So it's, you know, rough news, but we're, we are moving forward. We have an interview this week. We've had a couple other people that looked good that have backed out, but we, we have multiple applications. So we'll be, we'll be looking through that and hoping that we can, we can fill that position in a timely manner. We have made an offer that was accepted for the full-time recreation director position. We're still going through some background checks and things, so I'm not going to be talking about the name. But they're starting on June 13th, so coming up here pretty soon. And just pretty happy with the, with the person we have. They have a lot of experience in putting events together, ranging from all different sizes, from small events to events much larger than events we will be putting on. They also have experience in social media marketing, so that'll be a help for the town, not only through recreation, but I've already talked to them about helping streamline all the social media and, and marketing for the town for communication. So we'll be looking at that. And then something I don't know that was discussed during the budget process, but I have talked to this person to go just outside of what a normal recreation director would do and to work with me and Rob Taylor on community development to start building a plan of how outdoor recreation resources can be part of the town's economic development plan. So they'll be, they'll be part of that community development team as well. So we're, we're excited to have them. We're working through the background checks and view of those things, but we're, we're pretty sure that we'll have a new director on June 13th.
And bringing in economic development is a great idea.
Yeah, I think it'll be, it'll be a good key to, to how we're going to use our outdoor resources to do that. And then we continue to write the job description for the facilities position that we put in. It's, it's getting really close to being done, but we have not released that position yet, but we will be in the near future. Continued update on the rebranding logo update. We've had our second meeting. I think that meeting went well. We kind of went in a big circle, kind of started with, why are we doing this again? And ended up, I think, really narrowing down the focus. And I, I think we're close to relieving something for some, some draft artwork to start to be put together. So we'll keep you updated on that as we move forward, but it was a good meeting. I'd also like to announce, if you haven't seen it yet, that on safewise.com, Enfield was given the, the great honor of being the seventh safest town in New Hampshire.
Really?
And looking at that, nothing else on the western side of the state, anywhere near us was even in the top 20. So I, you know, I contribute that to the great work of our police department staying on top of things. I know when I talked to Roy when I first got here, he talked about how during COVID and some of those times, they really stayed on top of it when other crime rates were going up. Our state about the same or went down a little bit. To give you just a little bit of background on this. Let me make sure I get these right.
You may have to speak up to this landlord.
Yep.
The dreaded blunder.
Okay, so the average was, to be considered a safe city, it's less than 1.5 incidents per thousand. And just to put it in perspective, Enfield came in with a violent crime at 0.9 per thousand, which is really good. And then on nonviolent crime, it was 11 incidents per thousand, and we came in at 4.4 per thousand. So really good work from the, from the Enfield Police Department. Just like to thank them for everything that they do. Last minute update was the, at the Lakeside Park, the retaining wall project has started. They put the silt fence in last week. I don't know exactly what work they got done, but I did see the little mini backhoe there to start tearing the retaining out wall out today. I know there were plans if they could get the concrete to pour concrete this next weekend. So that project's moving forward. We also did a walkthrough, like Patty and some of them to put it together, but we did a walkthrough last week at the Lakeside Park to start to vision and layout where the, where the walking trails and picnic benches and different things that we could put there was. And it was a, it was a really great walkthrough to start to see where, where we could be headed with the park and our next projects. Surplus equipment, we did release on listserv, Facebook and the town Facebook page some links, but the town surplus equipment that you guys authorized getting rid of, the Ford F-350 truck, police board Taurus and the pressure washer steam cleaner have been listed for sale. And those should be sold on its dovedeals.com within the next 10 days. So if you're, if anybody's interested in looking at those and bidding on them, they'll, they'll be up for another 10 days before that auction closes. And then I did want to update, I gave you a packet in the, in the second select board packet that I laid on your desk in front of you for tonight, just a, a back and forth that I had with Sammy, not a right to know request. He made a request through, as if he was this, or not as if, but as the CIP Committee Chair for all payments, communication with MTV Building and Contractors for the last five years. I did put that information together for him and I have it ready, but I did let him know that that was outside the purview of the CIP Committee to review past projects like that, that I would be treating this as a personal right to know request. You can see the back and forth. He wasn't very happy with that, but I don't feel it's right for me to use taxpayer money to mail him that information, that that's something that he needs to do. It was 70 pages of information by the time we got all said and done. Just wanted to update the select board. I am, we haven't been, or at least the last few times, we have not been charging for those copies when people do a right to know request. But per RSA 9184, I'm going to start charging the same rate that we charge other people for copies. It's a small price in the total, total right to know request. I did just a little adding on this one. I had my department heads put in time for them or their people that worked on this. And the estimated cost of this 70-page right to know request was $350 to the town. So there is a cost to these, if we can regroup a little bit through the, through the photocopies, I just want to let this left board, I'll be, I will be doing that in the future. That's it, that's all I have for my town report.
Good. Communications, none at this time, so we go on to business, fire department surplus equipment.
I can go through this a little bit. Phil gave me a rundown that is in your packet. We have some surplus equipment. They have ATSDA SCBA unit, the bottles, that have been replaced over the last three years, so we don't use them. And they're no longer certified for NFPA standards, so that's not something that we can use. And we really can't sell them to anybody. We can't give them to another department. We talked to the rep to see, sometimes they have a trade-in type program to get them back, and they said no. But he did talk to a company that takes this type of equipment and sends them overseas that have a little less stringent certification than NFPA. You know, some of those third world countries are happy to have anything to help them fight the fire. So he's looking to get rid of those. And then he also has several old radios that don't have a purpose anymore. And our current radio supply, customer supplier would not be interested for parts or turn in their old ones. So he just wants authorization to get rid of this equipment.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the fire chief to dispose the equipment list term.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, Boyan King Invasive Species Inventory and Management Plan kickoff discussion. And members of the Conservation Commission, Maskoma Lakeset Park Committee, and Maskoma Lake Association may be in attendance. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine, yes.
Great. Good to see you all. My name is Grace Glenn. I'm calling in from Randolph, Vermont. I am a wetland scientist and field naturalist with DuBois and King. And excited to be kicking off really just the, the very first steps of, of this project, working to create a non-native invasive species management plan for the entire town of, of Enfields. And this is kind of a neat opportunity at a larger scale than typical invasive species projects. So we're excited to be involved. My, my background is really in botany. I'm an ecologist and botanist and do a lot of rare species inventories and different plant inventories all throughout Vermont and New Hampshire. So just wanted to introduce myself to you all and give you a brief overview of what will be, what we'll be doing and take, take any questions or comments too. I'll be, I'll be brief here. We, and this, this will be a five-year project. So we're just kicking things off this field season and what we have on the docket for the summer is doing the baseline inventory for the work. So figuring out what we have on the ground for non-native invasive species. This will be plants, terrestrial and aquatic plants, not looking at animals for this project. And then also this year, you can expect a baseline report to be delivered to the town in the fall, following the field season. So this will be kind of a existing conditions report for the entirety of the town-owned areas. So that would be 66 miles of roadways, you may know, and about 380 acres of, of town-owned land. So the, so that report that will come to you in the fall, that will, that will be a way to, after there's, you know, future control work, you can then compare the, the state of invasives to that baseline condition. And so we can see over time through monitoring, again, through that, that five-year period, we can see whether or not the control works. And hopefully it does. And we'll be, DuBois and King will be involved throughout those five years with, with doing long-term monitoring, depending on, on what species we find and what we find out there. So that report will include the management plan, you know, that basically lays out specific guidelines, management recommendations to the town. That will again depend on, on the species that, that we find, you know, what time of year should species be treated? What should the, the treatment methods be and so on? So yeah, I guess the only other thing I wanted to, to say in, in introducing the project was, we really have a couple different objectives with this project. One is, is just the control of non-native invasive species. And that kind of goes hand in hand with increasing ecological integrity across the town. You know, we know that especially now in a, in a biodiversity crisis, if we can replace those non-native invasives with native species, you know, that's going to benefit the, the entirety of the town from an ecological perspective. But then the second kind of objective is, is really an outreach, outward-facing educational goal of involving people all across the town. You know, we acknowledge that this project's not going to be able to eradicate every single invasive plant in the town of Enfield because it will be restricted to, to town-owned lands. But the idea is, you know, this can be, hopefully we can get private landowners to feel invested in this, especially landowners who are adjacent to town-owned lands and help kind of prompt a greater movement there. And then serve as a model for, I think, other towns across the state. This hasn't really been, been done in such kind of a holistic way across towns too much. So I'm going to get the word out and hopefully serve as a model for, for future work. So I guess I'll, I'll stop talking with that and see if anybody has questions for me.
I'll add a little bit before we open the question. So Grace did a great job kind of covering the project and that's really, really a big effort of this is figuring out what we have and making the assumption that more than likely, that's what's on other public or privately owned properties. And then putting those management plans together and making people publicly aware, like she said. And, you know, we have the Conservation Commission here. I invited the Maskoma Lakeside Park because there's some invasive species down there that they were concerned about. And the Maskoma Lake Association has, has talked to me about wanting to be involved in this project as well. So if we can, you know, charge these committees and others throughout the, throughout the town to help us get the word out and help get those public events going, to get people educated and understanding the importance of this, it'd be great. And I also look forward to working with Grace and DuBois and King to, to create this model that can be shared. And hopefully we, we start that groundwork for, for other communities to be able to take care of a project similar to this.
But yeah, your mention of other communities is something I've been thinking about. What is your sense of the other communities in this area, such as Lebanon, and their awareness of this issue? And are they making any attempts to deal with it?
You know, I, I don't know about any town-wide attempts. I think it's really, there are definitely more and more efforts on a parcel-wide basis. But yeah, you know, I'm not, I'm not quite sure about that.
So I certainly noticed New Hampshire DOT making quite a mess of, of the shoulders and ditching at the moment. And you can see the mangled Japanese knotweed lying there. And so that, that concerns me, you know, that we, we may be doing wonderful things here, but how do we connect with other people of the area?
Yeah, it's a good point that what, what we do affects the surrounding towns, especially when you have big river systems connecting, connecting towns. So I think hopefully it's something that can be collaborative. And I just want to echo what Ed said, that we really want this to be a collaborative effort. So I'm looking forward to working directly with the Conservation Commission and any other organizations that are, that are interested.
Would we do a homeowner, like a meeting of some kind for homeowners who want to, you know, make plans or learn what they can do as well?
I foresee us doing one or two big public events like that, but then creating some pamphlets and things that can go, you know, we had a great farmer's market this weekend. So being able to distribute pamphlets at those places and have contact information of how to, how to get ahold of people that can, that can help guide people in the right direction.
Maybe work on publicizing it a little bit, you know, through the Valley News or other media to, to get the, the local communities at least aware.
Dave Bouffay has a question.
Dave Bouffay?
Yeah, I think the, and.
There we go. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, good.
Okay, I was trying to get so you could see me too. There we go. No, it's not going to stick. The rail trail runs through a significant portion of the town and is owned by the state. And there are several sections of it that they clearly have some invasive plants on that. Have, are they involved in this today? And if, is that something that we should try to persuade perhaps with the helps of Friends of the Northern Rail Trail?
We can talk to Friends of the Northern Rail Trail. It is not included in the town's project. The town project is for town-owned properties only.
Yes.
I was just saying.
Give, give us your name.
Shirley Green.
Thank you, Shirley.
Crystal Lake Improvement Association would certainly want to be involved in it also.
Yeah.
We should ask the folks on Spectacle Con. I don't know if they have an association, but they do have some Japanese knotweed and some of it is overflowed into my property, but so I'll be looking at doing that project.
Other comments, questions, sir?
And I'm Dr. Tyus, Chair of the Conservation Commission. And I don't know whether you have seen our natural resources inventory report or not, but in that report, we have listed by map, by lot and by acreage, all of the town-owned properties. And if this will help you in identifying those using the tax map, I'll be glad to send you a copy of it.
Oh, thanks. I, I do have a shape file of all of the, the town-owned parcels, so that should be the same data. Is that right, Ed?
Yes, that's the most apparent data.
Yeah, but it would be, it'd be great to see any natural resource inventories that have been done on any of those lands.
That's on our website too.
Okay, excellent.
Sir?
Bud Lynch, Maskoma Lake Association. You mentioned aquatic plants. I was curious as to where, what you were looking for, because there's very little in town, town land and the lake itself is probably nobody's land. It's a state.
State lands.
Yeah, it's a state.
Yeah, and, and you know, we may not have much there. I actually haven't, I haven't spent enough time on, on any Enfield water bodies to know. In Vermont, you know, we have issues with invasive milfoil and frogs bit and things like that. So, but yeah, I actually, I'm, I'm not sure that we'll, we'll really have much to deal with in the way of aquatics. I'm kind of guessing that it will be mostly terrestrial plants.
And we can look at that though, so I think there are, there are some invasive species. So if we can look at that, that would be great.
Well, the milfoil is here. We, we've been working to manage that for the past 25 years. And it's actually, we're in a positive place. We always hate to brag too much. But it's also been not just because if it's lakeshore, it would be lakeshore in Lebanon also. So it's all together. But the Maskoma Lake Association will continue that monitoring and dealing with the milfoil as best we can. With our purple one, blue stripe and other things. Have, it, it seems to be in better control. And I think they were using some insective, insect-type attack on it, but I really haven't had much of the stripe for the past couple of years.
You guys are doing a fantastic job combating the milfoil though. It's really apparent.
That's a big deal. Thank you.
So yeah, we'll have some meetings with them and we'll look when we're out in the field. But you know, if we identify stuff that we are having problems or have had problems with, I think it would be good to get that education out as well.
Yeah.
And I think it's good to identify other, you know, non-native aquatic species that maybe aren't a problem right now. But we, we see that, you know, over time, there are these events where certain introduced species will take off all of a sudden. You know, some condition allows it to do that, like climate change. So having the inventory of, okay, we know what's here, even maybe there isn't just a tiny bit of it, but we can kind of keep an eye on those species.
Other comments, questions? From the board? Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Good luck and all the good work you're going to do.
Thank you. Thanks, we'll look forward to working with you all.
Next up, we have the 2022 paving bid.
So Jim, put a, a little write-up in your, in your packet there. I think it explained it fairly well. I don't know that I could say much more.
I would make a motion that we accept the bid pricing offered by Blacktop in West Lebanon, New Hampshire, as recommended by DPW.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you to Jim, because I know this summary is actually a lot of course, even though it's a fun one page.
And then we have the facility funding discussion and approval.
Well, I gave you some stuff in the packet before you sat down, the little stack that I had on the desk when you walked in. I've been doing a lot of work on this and Elise has been thankfully helping. She's been doing a lot of work preparation. She's really pulling all the documents together that the, the bond attorney that we have on staff, or not on staff, on our data that we're working with. You know, every day there's two or three documents that we need and Elise has been doing a great job pulling those together. I've been working with the bond bank, USDA, Renell from Divine Millman, our council, and Maskoma Bank, trying to figure out what the best way to put a funding stack together is and how we can best serve the town of Enfield. Like I told you before, if we ended up going with just the bond bank and we go get these bonds, we can try to lock in some lower rates. But it really limits us in the ability to, to get grants and even do some more fundraising. I was shocked to learn, actually last Thursday, I learned that, that the bond bank is estimating 3.9%. We talked about 3%. And they said that they don't feel that that's a conservative estimate, that they're a little concerned it may be higher than that. Talking with Maskoma Bank, and I put some amortization schedules in the back of that, they're willing to give us a 30-year amortized loan with a 20-year fixed rate and a one-time adjustment in 20 years at 3.1%. Well, it's 3.15 to be exact. So it's really close to what we were estimating there. There's one rule that I've learned about as we go through this, that to be bank qualified, we cannot take out more than $10 million in one calendar year. So working with our council, working with the bank on this, what I think I'm gonna, what I'm recommending tonight to the, to the slide board is that we take out two loans right now. If you look at your list, those are listed as loans 622 on both of them. So $3,264.9850 for the Whitney Hall and $5,759.066. That puts us in at just a little over $9 million, $9,23,164.50 for this calendar year. That gives us the room in there to take out the Oak Hill loan and the DPW truck that we're still waiting for. And we stay under that $10 million bank qualified, which allows us to keep these better interest rates. The other thing it does is it sets us up. I pulled out $1.5 million out of each loan, and that gives us $1.5 million worth of room to go try to find grants, do fundraising, do what we can do to lower the cost of those projects. It also gives the new. It also gives the new NPAC committee the chance to work with me on design to see if we can design good buildings. And if we can bring that cost down a little, it'll also help in there. And then the second loan would be after January 2023. Anytime after there, we can take out that that second loan and we would know a lot more of what we actually need as we're getting there. We can see what the market's doing, and if we don't need that money right away, we can continue to watch the market. But in all the work that I've done, I think that's the best way to to stack this, and I, I'd like to talk with the select board a little and do that. If I bring you back up to Whitney Hall, um, you can see there, the capital reserve that we had already put in in the article is listed there. I worked with Shirley to get the actual fundraising amounts that they have right now in Mascoma Bank. That doesn't, that doesn't accrue any future fundraising or people that are going to donate, which it sounds like we've already have people looking at that. So we'll, we'll continue to look at that number. And then I learned actually after the vote that we had approved the $150,000 to redo the parking lot in the Tiff district. So that was in in part of the the funding, so we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll use that as part of the project as well. So we'll, we'll continue to stack and then I, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to, happy to answer them. We, we attended a lot of meetings and talked to a lot of people trying to figure out the best way to do this and catch the interest rates while they're still.
Oh, I think that's great.
I think this is great. The Tiff, um, I'm trying to remember, at some point or another, there was some parking paving and then basketball court wrapped together, do you?
They were, I believe they were separate, the basketball.
Were they? Oh, the basketball court was separate.
Basketball court was a separate line item and $10,000 was, I believe it was $10,000 was, to aside for that, but it hasn't happened.
Were we trying to do the projects together, though? Was that what it was? So we could get a better rate on the basketball court?
I think that was just, you know what, we'd have to, we'd have to, we'd have to go back here to get the details.
Yeah, because I can't, I can't quite remember, but I know, I think when we go to pave, we're going to get asked that question. That's why I'm asking it.
So we can definitely look at it. If they can pave that or do what they need to do at the same time, it would make sense to combine projects.
Do we have a PNS for the property or?
Not yet. I'm still working on that and I'll, I have a little bit more to toss through with the attorney before I come to you guys with a, a plan of how we're going to do that. But um, we can definitely do a purchase and sale agreement. As I told you before, this money cannot be used for the purchase of the land, so I'm trying to work out the fine details of what we can do to to make that purchase and sale happen. Hopefully soon, so.
I was asked again about using Hughes Park and gave the information that was in the previous study with the deed evidence. I, that was reused. Um, I don't feel like we wanted to get into a legal tangle over deed covenants. That's just my, yeah.
That's right. I know what you're discussing.
Remember when they looked at it originally, they looked at plots all over town?
Yes.
And Jay Barrett very nicely sampled, it was not every plot that they looked at, but many of them for feasibility, and that was what he looked at. And there are deed covenants on the park itself, so we, that ha, you know, has to be used for recreation purposes. So we couldn't build a building in the majority of the park, so he kind of cited it over the basket, because there were three different acquisitions, I think. So, um, but it's in the report from Jay and the um, pictures that he had included separately, so I, I don't see us doing it, but.
And the NPAC went, went through that site as well.
Yes.
Uh, it got very complicated with entrances, exits, like, um, and you would essentially have to rebuild the entirety of Hughes Park.
Yes.
As well, and you'd still have to deal with a complicated deed.
Yeah.
Situation.
I, I said I would ask the question, but I.
I don't see it as a.
And certainly as the NPAC was looking at it, it was, that is a wonderful park, great asset for the town. Not the best use of the town resources to put the facility there. That was sort of the general consensus.
Well, and as the police chief spoke, there's been other research in other towns, and it's, it's actually a good thing to move public safety out of the downtown area.
Dave Boffe has a question.
Dave?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Dave Boffe, um, a couple of years ago, um, eh, the approval of the first stage of the um, water and sewer evaluation and and renovation was uh, under process. I think with a total of uh, somewhere around six, $6 million. Does the funding for this limits uh, say, mean that the, that that project cannot go forward or is not planned to go forward?
No, that project's moving forward right now.
The funding for that project's already in place, is I believe the answer to that.
I think so. I'm gonna, I'll double-check on that a little bit more to make sure we're, we're good there.
I have a question on the Mascoma Bank. Just, is there a limit on how much the rate can be adjusted in 20 years?
We're going to be working with that. Um, there is a rule that that we have to follow, so we're going to have to do a little bit more negotiation. Mascoma Bank, but it um, um, it allows us um, one payment cannot be more than 2% higher than any other payment that we've made. So there's, there's some rules in keeping those payments fairly, fairly secure. The other thing that I didn't talk about that's kind of nice, if we keep our eye on it, I was talking with Mascoma is if we get down the road in this ways and interest rates do something different, we can always refinance this loan that we couldn't do if we went with the law base, so.
I think this is similar to the structure the school undertook at one point, the problem.
I bet that's very similar to the.
It is from Mascoma.
Same thing.
Yeah.
From Mascoma, and they don't do 30-year fixed for commercial, so.
Need a motion?
Do we have, we have a motion. We wrote them.
I know, come on, well, really, thank you. I make a motion, we authorize the town manager to enter into loan agreements for the public safety building and the Whitney Hall renovation projects in an amount not to exceed $9,750,000 in calendar year 2022, and further authorize the town manager or their designate to take such action and execute all documents as necessary.
Second. And I'll explain that just a little bit. What I showed you was a lot less, was less than that. But what that does is it allows us, with the two loans that we know are coming, to stay up to that.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Donation to Mascoma Lakeside Park Fund, $5,000 from Eastman Charitable Foundation, vote to accept required.
I make a motion, we accept this donation with thanks.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Donation of Enfield Fire Association, one eight-foot confined space tripod kit valued at $2,994.64. Vote to accept required.
What is this?
It's a confined space rescue tripod, so it holds the ropes and stuff when you go down into a hole, let's save somebody.
Do we have all of the harnesses that are needed for that as well?
I think they already have confined space gear.
Okay.
To do that, I don't know if they have a three-point harness that could be used, but I think they do, so they're just getting a new tripod.
Okay. Motion?
I make a motion that we accept this donation from the Enfield Fire Association with thanks.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, board committee memberships. For Mascoma Lakeside Park, we need to establish the number of members.
We talked about that last meeting. Um, I did go to the Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee, and they decided that they would like to keep the nine members that they had on the books already, and we'll, we'll limit it to that.
I make a motion that we formally set the number of members of the Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee to nine.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee applicants and by name of Coburger.
I make a motion, we appoint Penny Coburger to the Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Heritage Commission full member applicant by name Johnson.
I make a motion, we appoint Madeline Johnson to be a full member of the Heritage Mission.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Budget committee, we have a resignation from uh, Gene Patton.
I make a motion, we accept a resignation of Gene Patton.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. And uh, Mr. Alstad would like to remain on the Mascoma River Local Advisory Committee.
I make a motion that we appoint Al, Alstad, um, reappoint him, sorry, to the En, as Enfield representative on the Mascoma River Local Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I noticed that there are two vacant slots. Are those ones we publicize typically or no?
We did.
Okay, I can't, I can't remember if the list was quite on.
Yeah, there were two other committees.
Okay.
So next up is the Municipal Facilities Advisory Committee Appointments, where we'll go to non-public sessions.
Yeah, I would like to go through other stuff first, but I can't explain here. I put a write-up very similar to what we did before. What we did before for the NPAC. Let's put this as the design theme, and I just really want to make it, make it clear that this will be an ad hoc committee to work with the town manager on design to be the, you know, to give recommendations and, and I don't want to say the word direction, I guess, but just to really advise me on, on which way they think we should go and be the public voice. For that, there are some highly qualified members that we'll talk about in a little bit when we put this forward. But I'm really looking for someone to, to help with the RFP process and to help with the design. And then staff will move forward with the, with the construction phase. So looking at a, a one-year committee at this point or until the design phase is, is completed. Really, I said, I put the write-up in there for you guys to see if you had any questions or concerns, let me open the viewing cabinet.
So the, and the town manager and the library trustee are addition to five, right?
Yeah, we'll be ex officio members on there, and we'll have five committee members.
Okay.
And then I also put in there that, you know, just like the last one, staff will be part of this, the library and the police chief fire team will be giving their opinion to what they think should be in each of these buildings, so we can, we can design them properly for their.
Dave Boffe does have a question.
Dave, you have a question?
I do, if you can hear me.
Yes.
I had tried to get in touch with Ed several ways today to find out a little bit more about the uh, the committee. Obviously, I've had involvement from a um, overall cost and, and taxpayer impact over the process, proceeding process. But do not have the uh, requested expertise in construction or design. Um, and I'm not at all clear whether it makes sense uh, to um, be um, on the committee or involved as needed from a, as I have been, um, from a, from a public input, input perspective. So I'm prepared to uh, to withdraw my application if that's uh, the uh, felt to be the, the best interest of the town.
I would recommend we allow Dave's application to stay in, that we can discuss all applicants. We have 21 applicants in five positions, so.
Yeah.
We can determine the best makeup of the board for that.
And I think it's worth saying in public that having 21 applicants is fantastic. I know there's a certain amount of risk and vulnerability in making yourself an applicant in a competitive process, so just, no matter who prevails, um, I certainly appreciate how many people put themselves out.
Yeah, so something's good about Enfield.
Really does.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we have a lot of really talented people, so I know it's going to be hard.
So we know we need to go into non-public at this point?
We do. Is there anything administrative that we need to discuss?
I have a question from last meeting.
Okay, yeah, let's go do that, and I have.
Photographs of Smith Pond struck my interest in the report. Now, who's responsible for doing this maintenance work and little bits of fixing up here and there that they're recommending?
Which one, which report was that?
The property owner.
Uh, from the New Hampshire Department of, of the, people's inspect dams, whatever department that is.
Well, that'd be, yeah, it'd be whoever.
And.
Whoever's property.
They have a very nice report with lots of nice photographs. Um, and I was just wondering, and they have many recommendations.
Who did they address it to?
Dear. Okay, Mr. Jason Barard, VP, Upper Valley Land Trust. So it's their responsibility, and we're just being notified out of politeness.
Yes.
And that's good.
Gotcha.
They have plenty of resources to do terror fund.
Yeah. Good.
A couple of other things that I wanted to bring up, if we have a moment before we go in, I sort of brought them up earlier, but we have this notice to voters that we're going to hang up with your approval. I don't think you have a copy of it.
Yeah.
Do they? Okay, you can put it out there.
This is town manager's report extended, right?
Yes.
Excellent.
I forgot to mention.
No, that's fine. I will make a motion that we authorize the town manager, their designate, to hang up this sign as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the other thing, and I put a copy of it on here. But just wanted to, to let the select board know, we've had a little bit of trouble with people sending in post-dated checks. So we worked with the attorneys at NHMA to make sure that we were well within our rights. And we've written up this little, and well, with the help of the attorneys, and we've written up this, this little blurb that we're going to put on the tax bills, if it's okay with you.
Yeah, I've already heard about that from a couple of people.
I didn't even know you could write a post-dated check.
Yeah.
Like, I learned something new. It never occurred to me.
So we said it.
They don't have any legal status as.
So you just pick a date in the future and just.
No, but there's no, once you hand a check, there's no legal backing to the date you wrote.
Got it, got it.
Yeah. So, and that's really what we're saying. We've, you know, I've said to a couple of people, no, we don't accept those. We do accept post-dated checks, but we're going to cash them back.
Right.
Just, just making sure people are aware of that, so they'll try to do that and weigh down their check, so. With that, I don't have anything else.
This required, we have signatures as well?
Needs to sign?
We'll do that. We can sign where we.
So the property tax abatements that are on, under administrative items, we don't need to vote on those?
That should be papered out. Yeah, there's actually paperwork to sign, so they don't.
Okay.
And it's a small amount.
I suppose before we go into non-public, I should ask other comments from the public on items that we have not addressed. Have a motion to go into non-public?
I move that we go into non-public session in accordance with RSA 91 dash A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, parentheses, must see.
Second. All in favor?
Uh, yes, I think we need to do the roll call. Yes, yes, yes.
Oh.
I think that's the technical with it.
Eric Russell, yes.
Kate Stewart, yes.
John Klug, yes.
We're in a non-public session. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks.